Just keep it like a deep.
Lots, lots.
He doesn't want to build another townhouse.
No, in the minimum it is six thousand, so it will take about.
If it fits and looks good, build it.
Well, you can't if you have laws against it.
Oh, we'll change it. One hand wants, one hand don't. My own house had to go to the Board of Adjustments to get it to fit.
No.
I got a goofy lot that goes straight to street.
I heard a flood, I heard a flood with name of locals.
Well, that's what the whole ordinance allows, that you can look at lots that have issues like, like, um, Bowman's Lot.
There was a remediation company. For some reason, I think.
Yeah.
They were just fighting with the insurance or the, maybe there was no insurance.
It's whoever's managing the building, well, I want to know about that, that's why I'm asking about it, whoever's the management, whoever's the management.
There's people, there's people that want to look at it now and. No.
No, warming it up, baby, warming it up.
I'm between all you guys.
So, it's basically saying that our zoning laws need to be adjusted if we want to be able to accommodate for this week, so we have to make changes. First, you just can't allow them to do it because it's against our ordinance, is that right?
One lot at a time, see what they want, see what they're gonna do. And you want them to fit, it's gonna look right.
Be French.
Don't build on the lot line and ten, lever twenty feet over the street.
Hey, you just can't lose your sense of humor when you're a mayor. Or I'm gonna just double down on everything.
Great.
Great. I'm actually, I'm actually gonna convince everybody.
You guys ready? Lisa, are you ready? Ready, get started.
Yep.
You guys ready? Can we please rise? I'm not on, but let you. I think you can push the button. Button the middle. Take your finger first.
I don't know, done, but I can see all rose.
Raymond, little difficulty, please. Ready? Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jacob?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Aaron?
Here.
Jackie?
Here.
Victor?
Here.
Approval of the agenda? I'd need to, is it all right if I add under my name, um, they didn't get added to their, they didn't get on the agenda in time, or either way, they're not on here. Uh, forty-three fourteen North Thirteenth Street to talk about their property line easement, or, um.
I'd like to add my name too, I had, uh, sent an email in this week to ask to be on the agenda, and for some reason, I was refused to be on the agenda. So, if you could add my name there, please, if you want to put a topic, put City Management.
Cameron, did you have, um, did you want to add the library on there?
Yes.
Light, under, and we'll put that under you, is that all right? Number three.
I don't know if this needs to be there, or just when we have communication, but I'd like to set a time for us to go over and look at the old senior center. Because I've heard that it's really getting derelict over there and see what's going on with it.
Okay.
We do have.
They just had remedy, people in there cleaning it up.
Yeah.
Just recently?
This is one of my topics also, that was, uh, what we talked about.
Well, just what?
We have plans for that.
Okay.
Um, all right, uh, anybody make a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda is changed.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda?
I didn't see it, we gave the packet?
Uh, we didn't receive the overtime and comp records, so approve the packet, uh, deleting Article D, Item D, whichever you want to call it.
Second.
Second that, second that.
Roll call, please.
Who made the motion?
I did. And then Aaron.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Um, communications from the departments, um, is Tyler here?
He's not here, but I.
You gonna talk one? Okay.
You have to use this tonight.
Got it. So Tyler's requesting that a motion be made on behalf of, what's it, uh, the vendor that has frozen wine slushies. They need a temporary, not temporary, but they need a, um, liquor license approval for their event.
This is the same event, or the same vendor as their last year?
Same vendor last year, aren't. Same one.
So make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Um, appointments to the park board, we got two openings. Um, the first, the first two, I guess, were submitted paperwork earlier, and they would like to have those two, um, approved. And then the two junior members, we got three.
See, there's, how many spots are open on there, two or three?
There's two spots open.
We got, we got, we got five, two of them are juniors.
No junior members right now, we can have two.
Okay, we have two. We have three on the sheet.
He said the first two were turned in first.
Well, you, yeah, I mean, whichever of the, whichever.
I guess I would just ask who out of the three, I've seen Carrie Giles on here numerous times trying to get on the board. Has she, I mean, has she been applied before Shelby Griffin and Ashley Wilson?
Yeah, no matter to me, I guess.
I don't, I don't know why there's three on here and there's two spots, but we just have to, we need to appoint two of them tonight.
I just know I've seen Carrie on there quite a few times, and I'm not remembered the other names, I know Ashley, but the Shelby, I'm not, I mean, I know. Carrie was definitely on the list the last time people were being appointed.
We were supposed to keep that list, I thought, so that.
So, I mean, I, is there, there's never a time where the person that's applied is next in line to get in?
No, different one.
Do you have, I mean, is there, is there a specific number, I mean, it's not a voting board, I mean, is there a way that we can put three? So, so can we put? Can we put three people on there and just have extra?
No, we have to fill those two spaces.
Two spots.
That's, that's it.
Okay, what, what type of idea?
I'd say Ashley Wilson and Carrie Giles. Just because I've seen her on there numerous times, and I know her husband was part of baseball, she's got a lot of opinions, she's. Always calling and asking things and always wants to be part of it, and it seems like she's been singled out, so I'd like to add her in there.
Do you want a second?
I'll second.
I mean, all three, I, I mean, we, all three of them are good.
Yeah, I don't even know Shelby, I don't have any personal relations, I just know that I've seen her numerous times here, she's actually called and asked me. And if there's no reason why we're not, and there's nobody in line to do it, and we're just picking people, and I guess if you're asking me, that's just my, that's who I'm picking.
And then also, can we add in the two, two junior?
The juniors.
Two junior members to your motion.
For sure.
I saw, he said he wanted to wait on those.
No, we don't have any right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to approve them also.
Yeah, I make it the Gracie Moreno, Abalie Garbes, Carrie Giles, and Ashley Wilson would be my motion.
You all right with that change?
Yep.
Roll call, please, Lisa.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Um, all right, Cameron?
What about the appointment to the library board, we got nothing there?
He don't have anybody, he hasn't nominated anybody.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the first four is discussing, uh, library raise, may I have Tiffany come up and speak a little bit tonight?
Hi, Tiffany's real line director of the library, I'm here for Kaitlyn Watson, Kaitlyn has been with us for a little over a year. And during our last budget meeting cycle, Victor had said, when I was pushing for more pay for her, to come back in six months, and so here I am. Um, she's our circulation manager, she's done a fantastic job, she's cleaning up our records really, really well, making sure that all of our items in the library are actually searchable, which wasn't before. Anyway, so she makes nineteen seventeen an hour, and I'd just love to get her up to twenty.
I make a motion to move her to twenty?
Second.
Roll call.
I don't think you guys can do a motion for that, since it wasn't previously on the agenda, I guess I would ask.
We can.
That's correct.
We can put it on the next agenda and be retroactive or something.
But it can still go forward until the resolution's made for next council meeting, so.
Yeah, you can set.
So, we just can't make a motion for it, but they can go ahead and move forward and give another raise?
You can approve it at the next meeting and make it retroactive back to whatever pay period she would like it to start.
We don't need to vote, we'll wait to vote.
No vote on that? I guess I, I was thinking that was what the appointment of the library deal was.
The next thing for me will be the memorandum of understanding for the Safe Streets Initiative with MAPPA, um, they have a representative here to speak to it.
Yeah, good evening, Jim Borner, I'm a transportation planner with the Omaha Council of Lofts Metropolitan Area Planning Agency. The agency just finished a comprehensive safety action plan for our region, that's Douglas and Sarpy County. And the incorporated areas of Iowa in Potawatomi County, so, uh, Council of Lofts, Carter Lake, Crescent, and McClelland. Our comprehensive safety action plan has a goal of getting to zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries by twenty forty. And, uh, we were funded for this project using a federal funding source called the Safe Streets and Roads for All, uh, which came from the bipartisan infrastructure law. We appreciate the support the city provided, there were a couple of public outreach events, uh, held in the city last summer. And we look forward to your support, uh, the memorandum of, of understruck, understanding, uh, just looks to make use of the plan. So, so we have a list of prioritized projects, which, uh, we think, uh, as implemented, could reduce the, the chances of fatal and serious injuries at those locations. And there's some, uh, general other recommendations from the plan itself, everything from, uh, behavioral changes to how drivers and pedestrians operate, as well as, uh, some, uh, big picture, uh, recommendations towards changing how we, we do enforcement as well. So, um, happy to take any questions that you do have, uh, otherwise, I thank you for your time and consideration of this MOU.
You have everything we need for that?
We have everything, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We need a motion to approve the memorandum, the memorandum of understanding.
It's under the resolutions, if you want to wait.
Okay.
So, the last thing I have is the SEI proposal for building security for the city hall. The upgrades would be, would bring us up current with times in other public buildings with having, you know, cameras when you enter. Safe space for the doors to be locked, opening, closing doors remotely, just different things, and, and I, I reiterate, that is not to keep people out, it's just for us to know who's in the building. And I don't think that you can go, and it was mentioned in our, um, study session, you can't go to any government building without having some kind of security that you need to pass through. And so, um, the total cost is about ninety-eight hundred to install, that's front door cameras, two door locks, key fob entry, and remote access via, um, the app that they provide.
Every time the public shows up the door, they gotta buzz in?
It's the same at the school.
During business hours.
At the school, this is a public building.
School's a public building.
School's private to me. I don't know, seems like lockdown.
I will say that if we're here by ourselves, especially when it's dark out, and people do come in, and sometimes we don't hear them. And they just wander around the building, or.
I think the way things are anymore that you need it.
I mean, we have, you know, we have, we don't have anything against people coming in to use the restroom, it's just we need to know that they're in the building. We had someone here last week that was sick in our restroom, and we weren't aware of it, we just heard it, and. You know, I just look at the overall safety of the building, and, and it's gonna be beneficial when we have meetings here in the evening where people need access to the building. I can set a schedule, the doors will be unlocked for that meeting, when they leave, they don't have to worry about a key, it locks behind them.
On the same hand, you could unlock it remotely if you had to.
I can.
Also, right?
Unlock it.
This is a two hundred dollar reoccurring fee for the duration of the.
For the contract, but it ties into our current.
So, it just adds two hundred to our monthly fee now that we already pay?
I know I asked this the other night, will this also cover the library and the community center or not?
No.
This is just on campus here, right?
Just on campus here.
So, why aren't, why don't they need to be guarded?
Well, I'm not saying they don't need to be guarded, it was just, I've been here two months, and I had to start somewhere. So, the other phases, the beauty of it is we'll have the infrastructure in, so it basically will probably just be the hardware going forward at different locations.
This is the same company that controls them also, correct?
Yes, yeah, I guess.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Victor?
No.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
All right, next item is, um, my name, we have a, on the valve project, next, this Thursday, we're gonna have, um, another shutdown. It's gonna be a larger shutdown than we expected to have again, but, um, it's just to get the. It's just what we have to do to get it shut down to invol, to, to do the three valves we need to do. Um, it's mostly gonna be Thirteenth Street East, there's a small section from Willow to K Street, that's gonna go over to Eleventh, we'll get, we'll get the map out on Facebook, and they're gonna put a sign out, and. Um, it's gonna be a larger shutdown, but it'll be from nine AM to two PM. Um, other than that, that's all I got for the valve.
It's not gonna be an overnighter?
Nope, it's gonna be during the day, they, they, they feel that they get less disruption during the day, especially with the kids in school, and that school will stay live. Um, they won't lose water, and, um. Next item is forty-three fourteen North Thirteenth Street. I know they were trying to put a fence up, and I don't know if they're, the area in the back didn't get vacated properly, or.
Yeah, uh, it's a simple request for city vacate the alley, uh, survey should have already been submitted after talking to the survey company. Um, I was informed, uh, last time I stopped in here, uh, almost two weeks ago, that it would be on the agenda for tonight, uh, for the request to vacate. And I had also submitted a, uh, uh, called a hardship letter, uh, because where the existing fence line was, and where the survey pins were. There was a slight difference there in talking to, uh, my neighbor to the north, um, Mike Christensen. He said that it would be okay to, uh, still have the fence at the other location, and he's the one that recommended the hardship letter for the fence to go ahead, uh, replacement fence to go ahead and go where the previous fence was.
Where's this at?
Um, Thirteenth.
There's nothing in the packet here about it?
You know where Mikey Christian?
Uh, the.
Okay, yeah, so he backs up, he's on the thirteenth side.
You're on the thirteenth side?
Yes, I'm on the.
So, they took.
Lisa's your neighbor.
What's that?
Lisa Darvo, or whatever her name is.
She's two houses over.
Yeah, uh, Ernesty's old house.
Okay.
Oh.
So, they just, they actually took the fence down, and they're trying to put it back in the exact same place, and you're putting.
Yes.
They're putting it right back up where it was, but when they went to get their permit, the, apparently, the right of way wasn't vacated properly at the time.
Okay.
Um, it's all, I mean, there's a garage, you couldn't access it if you wanted to, there's a garage on the one end.
On the other end, yep, and the rest of them are all blocked off also.
Right, and I don't think.
What do we need to do?
Uh, I already, uh, had a survey done, and, uh, talked to the survey, uh, guy that did the survey, he said that he, uh, had, uh, cemented it in already.
So, I don't know if it was, I don't know if the building, I don't know if they were sending it to the Board of Adjustments, or if it was, uh, what happened with it, but.
Since he's requesting a vacate, uh, vacating the alley, then it would come to you guys, so.
So, and we're just re-vacating it, well, they already did it a long time ago, or, I don't know, maybe.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is if we could research the record and see when it could have been vacated, because my gut tells me that it was vacated. By ordinance or resolution, however, there's two ways to do it, I'm, I'm guessing you did it that way. But one thing we might have to do would be have your survey, um, crew do it, some additional work. Because I'm guessing it, it didn't probably fall down in the vacation process, it probably fell down in the deed, where, then we have to, so after you vacate it, then you need to deed all the right-of-way parcels to the homeowners. And the county here makes you have surveyed parcels, so they can add it to the, the taxable parcel for the homeowners, so I've, I'm guessing that's what happened.
Are you pulling the lot line up, Jacob? What, are you pulling up the lot line?
I, no, I was trying to zoom in it.
Oh.
The computer touchscreen, so.
Oh, we can really, I mean, he's had his fence sitting in his driveway for a couple of months, I guess, is the problem.
Well, the county, they do not have it recorded, and I looked through all the old records, and I did not find one for his street.
Okay.
Streets around him, but none for his street are any of those properties.
So, this is the alley that's been vacated on both ends except yours?
Uh.
To the north, it's not.
That whole block, that whole block.
There's a, there's an alley still behind Darvo's and Purcell's, and, I mean, it still goes till it runs into that garage, but it's.
The alley ends at the, uh, Breeze Way House. Uh, to my.
North.
Cardinal directions a little off.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, we can't really act on it without having drawings and all the proper.
There'll be work that we need to do, and I think probably the only questions are, do you want reimbursed any of our costs, or that's the other thing. And then the, the other possible issue would be is if it's, there's two different kinds of right-of-way, there's like fee title right-of-way, which we own, and then there's easements right-of-way, which we just have access rights over. So, if it's, um, the access type easement, then we don't need to do any survey work, they'll just vacate the easement out of the record. Um, if it's fee title, then we'll need to deed it, I'm guessing it's the fee title type right-of-way, that's what almost all of ours is.
I mean, in the next month, I mean, unfortunately, uh, in the next month, we can have all that decided, I mean, these, it's been a long time already, like, um. We can, can you work with?
Yes.
And then get that taken care of?
So, are we, um, what's the word, doing the whole alleyway, all the way up?
You should, yes, if you're gonna vacate any of it, you should vacate all of it.
Yeah, not just a piece of his.
Yeah.
From, from, so from his place, basically, from there north, it's still an active alley, I mean, people still, there's a garage, people still have.
If people are using it, are they doing any rear access for, to their homes from it?
Yes.
So.
Just from, I mean, there's a garage like built at the end of the alley, so nobody could go through to his place if they wanted to, I mean, there's no reason not to do it for his, but from there north.
Well, you could isolate it to that, if that's the case, I just assumed it was some unopened right-of-way that he was building in.
I mean, if, I hate for him to have his lumber just keep sitting in his yard, if nobody's opposed, I'm not, I mean, if nobody's opposed to it, can they move forward with putting their fence up?
I just think you should direct the building inspector to do that, having Cameron, if you guys want to do that, as a courtesy to him, so he can finish before the season ends, I just would have Cameron manage that.
And then we'll get the, we'll get the paperwork end of it taken care of.
Council don't have an objection to putting it back where it was.
What I can do is I can, I can work with Clint on getting the checklist forward, and you guys can approve it pending everything on the checklist being completed.
Okay.
We can do that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody wanna make that motion?
Second.
Build the fence.
So, we need to make a motion, correct?
Let's make a.
So, we need, let's, let's make a motion to, uh, allow them to move forward with the work pending approval of everything needed from Cameron and the inspector.
Good with that?
Second.
Good? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Uh, Clint?
Is this the urban renewal item?
Uh, you're.
Or do you want? I'll, can I all start off real quick, like, with the one twenty-two Carter Lake Club court case? So, I had, at the last meeting, I told you their days were coming to a close to answer us, and I had filed for a default judgment because of their failure to respond to our lawsuit. Uh, we were, they would have issued a default judgment on us for, in favor of us this morning, but they answered last Friday afternoon, so there's scheduled a, a trial setting conference for December tenth. And I'll have more information then. And then on the urban renewal item, if this is, oh, do we need to call, uh, Austin, Lisa? Okay.
Can you hear me, Austin?
Yep, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Can you hear me talk, Austin?
Uh, yeah, is, is that Clint?
Yes.
Okay, yep, I can hear you.
If I say anything incorrect, or if you have anything to add, just, just, I'll be real brief, so just catch it at the end.
All right.
This resolution is related to the, um, ongoing matters to approve the Overland Group's senior housing complex. The council and P and Z had gone back and forth with them a few different times in relation to the stormwater, uh, detention basin that you're all aware of. They are proceeding with the option to enhance that, as part of that, they would like a rebate of those costs to them. And the easiest way for us to do that is to put it into an urban renewal area that would rebate the tax, increment taxes back to them, so on their increased value, I, I believe it's a two to three-year cost, at the most, most likely two. And this action would be the start of that process, we would have additional items on the agenda next time, there would be a resolution. And a public hearing on that resolution on the next agenda, and then also an ordinance to create the TIF dis. There would be a resolution and a public hearing on that resolution on the next agenda and then also an ordinance to create the TIF district itself. And that would be the funding mechanism that you could use to do this rebate and then your other stormwater projects that you've been discussing with Elizabeth. And that committee Jason had mentioned to me, so that's all I have on that.
Yeah, and I think, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I don't, I don't have anything else to add. I apologize. I had a conflict tonight, so I wasn't able to be in attendance, but I should be able to make, uh, hopefully make the next one. Uh, but yeah, noth- nothing's really changed on our end from the previous meeting, uh, same kinda commitment that we had all discussed last time. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
Anyone wanna make a motion on that?
We need a motion to move forward with it?
Yeah, I have any questions about it?
Anybody got any questions, comments? Make a motion to, uh, approve the TIF agreement for Overland Properties?
Second. And this was just on the, just so the public knows, this was just on the overage of the extra things that we're asking them to do to enhance the, enhance the. Stormwater retention pond.
Above and beyond.
Yep, they're going above and beyond the ordinances and what we, what they have to do. Roll call please.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Abstain.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, on to ordinances and resolutions.
We got one more about the dog nuisance?
He said he, Clint said he didn't have anything.
I don't have any, that's all, I resolved all the ones that I, I could in that case. If there's additional ones, I could, I'd be happy to deal with those, but.
It's handled, correct?
A- as far as we can, yeah. They did, uh, I guess, I can't remember if I told you this, but the, I did go back and have a second court hearing with them and. Uh, they assessed them eleven hundred dollar in fines and court fees.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions, uh, A, consider a resolution of necessity regarding the, we already did that one.
Yep.
That's what we just did. All right, on to B, consider a motion to approve local match resolution for the hazard mitigation assistance program. Grant application for new generators. We talked about that Wednesday night for all of our generators in town.
Make a motion to approve that?
Second.
Roll call please.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes. Consider a resolution to adopt memorandum of understanding with MAPPA.
Make that motion to approve that also?
Second.
Roll call.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Consider a resolution authorizing check signing procedures and designating authorized officers for signatures. This was something we talked about the other night and just. Just to, um, ensure that at least one of the two signatures on checks are from a elected official.
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Consider a resolution to approve assessment of past due water bills. Um, I think it was like.
We got out?
I think it was like forty-five hundred dollars, hold on.
Yes, and they actually have till the twenty-ninth to pay. That's the due date. So if any, if we receive any more payments, and I am also working with a couple of the, um, landlords to make sure that their bills are correct, so.
It's four thousand nine hundred forty-six thirty-four. Um, so can we table that one for now? Cause she's still working on it?
Well, that's why we wanted to get your approval tonight, so we can, once we get to that due date, we can go ahead and assess them.
Okay, I got you.
Motion to approve?
Second. Roll call.
Jacob?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes. Aaron, I accidentally skipped you. I skipped your name, so.
Oh, that's right, okay. I thought it was going, that's fine, okay. Well, I, I mean, I, I, earlier in the week, I had asked to get on the agenda and I guess my first question is to Cameron, did, uh. Do you know why I wasn't put on the agenda?
No, I don't know why you weren't put on the agenda. I recall seeing the email to be on the agenda. And subsequent emails after that, it, I don't know if it was still pushed forward that you wanted to be on it, so I'll take responsibility for that. It was definitely not intentional.
Okay, um, the next couple of topics I wanted to address with the mayor, kinda ask him a couple of issues. Or his opinion and where he stands on a couple of issues with this. One of them was what Jackie brought up earlier and that's talking about the, uh, Carter Lake. Retirement center, the old building, uh, earlier in the year, we had had a water leak in that building. We knew about this. Um, nothing has ever been talked about since then. We haven't heard nothing about it. Uh, in the last week or so, I had seen some, uh, water mediation companies over there. And I knew this is, this is months after we knew there was already a water leak, so I stop in to investigate. I started asking a little bit and I find that there's mold from ceiling to floor and the, and. We pretty much have a, just a catastrophic disaster of a mess inside the building. So I'd like to speak to whoever the manager and officer is, who is responsible or take care of these buildings and find out what happened. Where we went wrong and for, I mean, ideal employment, I deal with water. I know what water destructs. When we had a problem and we had a water disaster, why didn't we clean it up? Mold only comes from leftover water and a lack of responsibility of cleaning up the disaster.
There was a water leak, uh, there was a break in there.
Uh, there was a break, that was months ago. And when we don't clean it up and we just leave a mess for months, then we come up with thousands of dollars of damage and mold. So I mean, I just, I'm questioning who was in charge and who, why we never did anything and how we got to where we are.
The mayor and Jackie, they were trying to get somebody to come in and clean it up. Um, she actually had somebody else that was gonna do it and then she had to turn around and go with this other company.
But again, it just, it, where we're at is it's, it's a, it's a terrible lack of responsibility. It's a cost that didn't have to happen. When just somebody with responsibility could have cleaned it up earlier. We didn't need to have a company come right in. We have workers. In that situation, we could have cleaned it. We could have talked about it. It's just another lack of responsibility. I'll move on from that topic. Um, I've had people ask me a few different questions a few times lately on, uh, the new house that Driscoll's building down here and it's not to go after Driscoll. Um, it's being told that the city of Carter Lake is paying for their sewer to be installed. And I just, I don't know this for true. I've been asked this and I can't prove, I don't know for sure, but I've asked a couple of people and I heard that we, that is the case. So I wanted to ask the mayor about that. He's not here tonight, so I'd like to bring this up and know exactly what's going on. Cause if, uh, earlier in the year, there was, uh, this was brought up. Me and Jason kinda had a little discussion about this, that the mayor possibly might have wanted to work with Driscoll and them. And my first opinion as a council person was, I have no problem working with a citizen and trying to help them out, but. Cities don't just buy citizens' infrastructure and if there's a situation where we wanna work together and we wanna build. For the future, the city would go in and they would increase the infrastructure that was there for everybody, not one person. So now if we just went down and we paid for an individual sewer to be installed, then we opened up for everybody that's gonna go there to have their sewer installed by the city. I'm just, and I don't know that that's, so the mayor's not here, so this is just something I wanted to bring up and get it to the public's attentions and we find out. Where we stand on this and if that's the case, because that's, um, not legal.
If I can add, councilman, um, that's a good segue into why we now have a citizens' complaint. Link on our website for, for people to report things like this, because if it's on Facebook, if it's. Brought up at the gas station, it's not gonna get a resolution. Now, you go to the city's website, you click citizen complaint. You get updated as the, as it moves through the progression of it. And then you get an email that it was ultimately, you know, taken care of. Also, you'll get a response of what was done. So this is that accountability piece that you're looking for, being able to follow up with people and get the appropriate responses from the appropriate.
But the problem on this issue, I feel, is that it's not just one person's concern. There's been discussions all over town about this. So I think it needs to be addressed more out in, in the open.
You're, you're speaking.
Not just your reply.
That, that's not the case? The city is not paying for the work that's being done?
As far as I know, I can check for you tomorrow. Do, do you know?
Well, it's nothing that you did. It wasn't something I was addressing with you. I was just, it was a topic that, it was one of the reasons I wanted to be on the agenda and I'm.
Yeah, this is not.
In my opinion, the, the games that are played in that office is the reason I'm not on the agenda. Um, earlier in the year, the mayor put his name on the agenda with no topic and attempted, just went after me. Uh, slandered me, accused me of suing the city for a million dollars, all kinds of different things. And then I asked to have my name on the agenda when he knows that I have some topics to talk to him about and I just can't get on the agenda. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong, as an elected official, do I have the right to be on the agenda? Can you, can I ask? Can I have, can I be refused?
So the council is responsible for setting its own rules and I believe you have a rules document because I've seen one that was kind of. Uh, altered version of one I had written like in two thousand nine. I don't know really how you guys even got it, but, um. You should spell it out in there, but generally. Um, a council member usually can't make a agenda item for the rest of the council to consider, but if you just have statements and questions you wanna ask, that's usually part of the. Council responsibilities, yes.
And if a council in a whole, as a group, requests questions or answers to a reason, is there any reason that a council, am I wrong? This is gonna be dating back to earlier, I wanted to have a meeting. We never got to have a meeting, so there was. We, we all have to be together in the public to discuss anything, so I figured now's a great time to just do that also. I wanted to have a media, a meeting earlier in the week to discuss, I had asked Cameron some questions. Cameron felt like he didn't have to answer me and told me to address you. Was I wrong in that situation? Can I ask questions? Is that wrong as a council to want to ask questions on something that happened? We never got to circle back on that. I never got no answers and I feel like we never moved forward on nothing, so if we're gonna have a roundtable discussion, let's just have a roundtable discussion now.
I'll just add to that, that if there's a question asked of me, if it's something that requires an open record, if it's something that requires. Any kind of, um, employee information or information that. Would usually come through an open records request, that would trigger me to say, reach out to Ken, to Clint. And me saying that isn't because I don't wanna tell you what you wanna hear, is because I wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way. And unless Clint has something different, I mean.
I'll just work with you guys however we need to and I think that, th- just, this would be kinda taking my attorney hat off, but I. I just think generally with the new hire you've made in the city administrator, I think you're. Putting a lot of resources that are gonna be available to help improve your government and. I just think you need to continue to work on how you make it all work, you know, and, and.
For sure.
Come together as a team.
Asking questions and kinda having concerns as a council member, especially in areas that I have expertise in, is somewhere, is something I felt like I was elected to do. And when I voice questions or I ask questions on concerns and get zero response and then get told to contact the attorney. I just wanna get advice on, I'm not a professional at this public works deal. I'm a construction guy. I yell and fire people on a daily basis. I handle construction work. I dig in the ground. I don't wear a suit and I don't work in the office, so I'm not real skilled at being professional and working with everybody's feelings. But when there's a topic or something that's, in my opinion, egregious or wrong, or I think it's something I bring up, I wanna ask about it, I want an answer to it. And if I'm wrong and I can't have that answer, I wanna be told and if I am right and I'm in the right spot, then I want the answer. So on that topic, we had a situation at the community center that never got an update on. I mean, if we're moving forwards. Are we stopping people from going that don't work at the office to go behind the counters? Stuff like that. I mean. We had a safety issue that I never heard nothing back. We haven't talked about it.
Well.
And then, I mean, I'm not, I wanna continue real quick. Moving forward with the safety, rolling right on to lack of experience. I still, there's still people being sent to do things that they don't have experience to do. It's just a. Can't we get to a spot to where if somebody don't have experience to do something, they look to somebody that does? Can we get to that spot?
That's what we're trying to get to.
To get to that spot is gonna require hiring someone that has the experience that you're looking for and quite frankly, to find someone that has. Experience in locates and water and sewer and water testing, you're not gonna be able to find that for under a hundred and eighty bucks, a hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And the only right thing we could do with that is like outsource a lot of those services to people service. Because what our guys are qualified to do, they're qualified to cut grass, they're qualified to take out trash. But until there's training or someone that's put in that position, we are where we are and I think.
And again, the city has a lot of assets and a lot of people that wanna help and we're not utilizing the capabilities. I have asked numerous times now, and I'm gonna ask right now, for one of these council members to make a motion to appoint me as an advisor to help you. I own my own company. I have numerous hours a day free. I have thirty hours of OSHA training. I, I make weekly schedules. I have, handle all, there's all kinds of safety stuff that guys, we could just have meetings and talk about and we could get through a lot of these problems. I've offered to come train. I've offered to come sit down and, over the last year, visualize and look at over the fifty-five thousand linear feet of sewer that we had where we. Many different problems. And because of bias in the office, because the mayor don't like me and Jackie Carl don't wanna work with nobody, we don't go nowhere. We don't move nowhere. So now I'm just blatantly asking, can we just put somebody to help in the position? Is there a council member that will make that motion? I've asked it before, me or Jason? It don't gotta be me. Both of us have great expertise.
I think everybody on the council has their certain skills and I think to, it's beneficial to us to take someone like you. And assign you to work within that area and maybe Jacob and some other area and.
I mean, it just to keep getting calls, I, I wanna ask a citizen in the, in the audience. If you were building a new house and you were expecting inspector to come inspect a contractor out in your front, would you expect the contractor to know what he's looking at? Is it fair to send somebody to look at that that has no experience in it? Never looked at it, never worked with it, don't know nothing about it. Is that the right thing to do? For the employee or for the city? I rest my case. I'm not trying to beat people down. I'm not just trying to beat the dead horse, but. We brought Cameron on as a new person, a new position to start getting away from the mayor having to be a part-time leader of everybody. Cameron don't have the experience in every area, especially the area that the city needs desperately, that we have no experience in. But you have a lot of leadership in the office area.
You know, the problem we're running into is. I've been here, what, two months now, almost three, and the things that we have done since I've been here. Is we've lost a public works director due to medical, but since then, we've had one person step up. We've started cleaning up the back lot. We make sure the trash is picked up every day. We make sure the grass is cut. We do the things that they were hired to do within their job descriptions. Now, give me a month, I'll put out a rec for a full-time employee to do those things. But. Clint can correct me if I'm wrong, but you being put in a position of where you're advising us. It's, perception is, is what, what do you say, ninety percent of the law, something like that? It's not what you do is what it looks like. And that's what a conflict of interest, I potentially, I feel potentially comes in.
Of what? Conflict of what interest? I volunteer my time to, to help the city get better.
It's contractors.
I mean, you guys sent a person that's worked at the city for a month to go do an inspection on a sewer job. That I'm being told the city's paying for, for maybe a cover up? I don't know what the deal is.
Well, let's.
But the guy don't, he's never inspected nothing. He's never done that. Why, why would we send him to do that?
Well, let's deal with it case by case basis. Me and Jason talked earlier, well, late last week about who can we send out to do those sewer inspections? How many of those do we do a year?
A few.
We talked, we, we talked last week late about if, if we just, until we get somebody in place about possibly just having. The building inspector department do all those inspections. I mean, some, so, cause they, they have to have, they have to have more experience in, in that than.
Somebody with experience, anybody with experience, the, the citizens deserve it. That's what we paying for.
And that keeps us out of, like, you said, me or you could be an advisor to that, like, but we're also not.
I mean, I'm not trying to be a, and here I am, I'm just being the bad guy and, and I'm putting, I'm putting an employee in a bad position because they're new and they're telling stuff, but. I mean, the, the person that was the leader, their first day of, I asked this question before, we didn't even devise a work plan for when they're leaving. The system's so busted that the employees don't even know when the leader's gone, how long he's gonna be gone for, who takes the phone calls. There's literally no system. And then after it's brought up, we start to devise a system. And it's not your, I'm not saying it's your fault, Cameron. This is just what you've been thrown into, but.
No, I just, I like to make sure that the truth that's there is spoken. I'm not saying what you're saying is not true, but before the. Public Works Director went sick, we met three times to discuss what things look like, but quite frank, there wasn't any structure before.
Exactly, exactly.
And so, to your point, people in positions that they can be more successful in is where we need to take things and.
But I, I mean, I think as far as the inspections, we have. But I, I mean, I think as far as the inspections, we have a building inspector department. And they, as opposed to, not that you did not experience it, I'm not, but like, that department, that's what they do, like, we should
I thought you were saying on inspections, just many different, I mean, we had a safety issue where we had our leader of the crew over here trying to pick a pump completely improper and almost killed somebody.
That was addressed.
That, that's really what brought me, really propelling me to try to get this done, to try to insert myself, because like I've said before, until you witness somebody die on a job site, it's something that you don't know until you witnessed it. And I have been there twice. I've been on a construction site, I've watched a man lose his life. So it's not, it's not a really, it's not a joking matter, and it's, it don't seem like a big deal until something really happens or you really have a close call. And when you do really have a close call, we really need to take it seriously. We really need to find out what's going on. And I'm fine if nobody wants to, but I am just trying to interject myself and to prevent that from happening.
If it's a conflict of interest, can we then have a committee? Can we create a committee to oversee and assist Cameron in building that department out, so that you have, instead of having to hire someone that's a hundred and eighty thousand plus, have a committee of individuals that have OSHA training or have training on bigger jobs or jobs that we need input on?
So for the work we're looking to do, I've met with people service. In my previous community, people service managed our water and sewer and our locates. To hire someone to do that would be, and it would take off probably fifteen hundred bucks on what we're paying for our meter reading. I'm in the process of putting a proposal together for that, just so you have everything in front of you and can make a decision. Right now, I'm giving it to you half cooked. By next council meeting, I will have a plan to move forward, because a plan wasn't asked of me, a plan was clean up the situation, and I've been trying to do that, and I'm not, I don't feel defensive
No, I feel you are, you are greatly, I mean, we asked a year ago to clean up that lot out there from all the non-city garbage.
But we're, we're going in the right direction.
One step at a time.
And I just, I just asked for some grace. And, and again, I just ask for some grace as we kind of go through some of these bumps and bruises that you guys have been dealing with for however long. So, we're moving, we're moving the needle, we'll, we can revisit it next council meeting.
The one thing I'd like to see is though, I feel like we're being left out of a lot of things going on. And that, like even what Aaron brought up, it's not just something in between you and him, it's something that we all need to be aware of. Some of these things that are going on, and I don't know how we make it more open and transparent for everybody.
If it's, if it's not personnel related, if it's not a disciplinary action, we can have a conversation about anything. Like, we had a conversation about the HR system we're putting in so we can track hours and pay better. We've had
But I think we all have some of the same concerns. And I'd like to have them addressed with all of us and not just one-on-one with
So feel free to send me concerns, and when I respond to those concerns, I'll respond to everyone on council, so that everyone's seeing the same thing.
I think just like the example, just so you, maybe you understand where we're coming from. I'll say it like from Aaron's example, if someone were to die on the job, it becomes the council didn't do their job, and then someone's going to go to a media source and not have our backs. Whoever that person, I'll let, leave that to the imagination, we've had it for, I've had it for two years now, so I think that's our biggest concern, we want to make sure, A, we're protecting citizens, but also employees, and I think I don't want that to be missed either. We do want employees to be trained, we do want them to feel protected. So, if something like that were to happen, we just want to make sure we're putting them in the safest potential spot.
So to that, the parties that were involved in that situation, I can offer this. They were both interviewed, they both gave their side of the story, which was exactly the same, it wasn't, no one you know, denied anything, and so the middle game was what's the proper standing operating procedure to remove a pump? And that's the process we have going forward, and I told the person that was wrong, in the event that you work outside of these lines again, there's going to be a heightened level of, of discipline. And so
My biggest problem with that is, is he's not at fault for that. The mayor hired a person to a supervisor position that's never supervised. So there's nothing that he goes to do that he has experience to do. Everything on a daily basis is a challenge. And we're not, I mean, he's getting better because he's got years of experience of excuse my French, effing up and trying it again, I mean, we usually take them all three whacks at things and get it right on the third time.
And I've told all staff since my first day that first and foremost, I'm going to advocate for them, so that they have a voice. And so, anything we decide to do moving forward, I think will be in writing, measurable. And if it's not met, then we can move accordingly. So, not disagreeing with anything, but if, if they're not here to defend themselves, that's what, in essence, I'm here for.
And then I'd like to also bring up, I want to find a real estate agent for that senior center. We've let the mayor try and sell it for years, I think it's time we find a professional to do it.
We're, uh, we're in talks with the library as to make an archive
Have we actually voted, have we voted on that?
Memorabilia in. And have it open like one day a month or something, ran by the
I'm good with that, we just need to do something with it.
You have the, Tiffany, she already left, I was a doctor. She sent me a note the other day that I can get with her, we can have a conversation about it, go in and take a look at it. Uh, there's a lot of history pictures that's been through these buildings that are just laying in closets and stuff, as you know. And it'd be, it'd be kind of nice if people just walk in once a month, twice a month, make an appointment for the seniors or somebody to go take a look at them. Uh, we own the building, we maintain the building. The library is willing to, to step up and help out with that, I think we should go forward with it.
As long as we have managed hours where we got people in there looking at it, so we don't end up with an issue like we have now, I'm
Yep. I mean, it'll only be like a once a month or two month opening. A lot of small towns have them, I guess, I, I don't know for sure, just what Tiffany was saying that uh, they got buildings they got there, you know, like the pictures we got here. They're open from noon till four on every other Saturday, every third Saturday, something like that. I would like to see us go forward with that.
Do they actually have the time, Patty, to take on something like this?
I don't know, I think we probably should talk to the board to make sure the board's on it.
Yeah.
It's got to start somewhere.
Anything needs to be done, no matter what, we just need to manage the building. If we weren't going to be in it, and it wasn't going to be managed, and the heat wasn't going to be kept on, then you, then you winterize the building. Do something. When a water line blows out and, and the walls get saturated with water and the insulation is saturated with water, you rip it down and you clean it up, and you close the building down. You don't just close the doors, you don't just let it sit, you don't just let it rot, and that's what happened. Oh, we can't do nothing now, the building's at a ruined status right now, I mean
We're cleaning it right now, correct?
Being remediated.
It's being cleaned up right now.
Mediated, yeah.
It'll just be naked walls and we'll have a blank slate to start with.
Cameron, can you and Aaron try to work out a time, like once a week or something to get together and start going over some, I mean, just go over, I mean
I just wanted to be there if there's questions, you know, I just, I was just throwing it out there, and I, I've told Bob this, I've told all the guys this. Between me, you, Chris, the people that are in the city that want to help, there is nothing that them guys don't do that they can't reach out to somebody and get a good explanation of how to do anything. Nine times out of ten, there's somebody that even just stop and check it out. I mean, there's there's people in this that, to be built, to be, to run the positions, we just got to build them.
Is that all you got?
Yeah.
You sure? All right, communications from the public. Uh, Kiwi? Uh, so, can you top that?
Come on.
Get up here.
Do you want us to sing you happy birthday?
We will.
No, we don't. The quickest way to even leave. Anyway, what I'm up here for is the field on, field one down there on our fields that got my name on it. I would like us to take my name off field one. If you insist on my name being on one, put it on field two. And name field one after Lyle Polberg. For those of you who don't know who Lyle is, Lyle coached baseball back in the late sixties, early seventies, and won three straight state championships. And I think we need to do something to honor the man. I've talked with his family and they have no problem with it. In fact, they asked if we do some kind of a ceremony for it to let them know so they can be here.
Is it too much to like do both him and his wife since they've both done so much for the city?
Lyle was the coach.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I suggested Lyle. I mean, really, if you come down to it, there's dozens of people down here we named the fields after.
Yeah, but I
I definitely would object.
Yeah, Lyle's, Lyle, like I said, Lyle was the coach, Lyle and, well, there's a couple others, but he was our head coach, like I said, three straight, and we've had other coaches win one, but never three straight.
Wow, I think that's cool.
But anyway, that's all I wanted.
Anybody want to?
All that will require is a, a motion to amend the resolution that established him in field one and moving to field two.
Is that what we need to do? I'll make that motion.
Second. So the motion is to move Kiwi to field two and then add Lyle Polberg to field
Field one. So wasn't there a name for the entire outfit?
The Hamilton
Still the same, that's the same, correct?
We got those new scoreboards, can we put names on the bottoms of them?
That's what I thought, we, we'll deal with that. We need to redo the signage for the
Right.
No.
We'll, we'll deal, we'll do
And one more thing, can we just, can we push to get the sign put up? We have a sign that we had made down there that never did get put up, I believe, can we get that up?
I think
Did they get it up? Okay, for some reason I thought that the sign that they had made didn't get put up. Okay.
It's not the quality we wanted, but we got the sign.
All right. I had a motion to, uh, move Kiwi to field two and make Lyle Polberg, uh, field one.
I made the motion, we need a second.
Second.
Aaron and, Aaron and Vic. Roll call, please.
Jason?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Victor?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Corey Stallwell? I didn't see him here. Table it. Uh, you have a table?
I do want to mention that, um, I know what he was here for, and I was over in Council Plus, and the big thing over there is besides the homelessness, the other thing was affordable housing, which is what a lot of these people are trying to do by making houses on smaller lots. But there's the new bill that was passed by the state legislature, legislature this last year, and they've recommended that the cities start making some changes in our ordinances because we need to make things that so that they fit with the new, um, the rule that they passed, the law that they passed. So they recommend that we, um, need to revise and make things comply with the new law.
What's the new law? Who's telling us to do this?
Uh, it's a new law that was passed July, you said? And it has to do with variances for lots. Like this guy wants to take a nine thousand square foot lot and split it, put a house on each one, which is below our minimum size. So the new law allows for smaller lot sizes, um, changes in setbacks, sidewalks, fencing, off-street parking, and so forth.
Right?
Yeah, it's, uh, the gentleman was at the city council, or at the planning board meeting the other night, and after the meeting, we kind of informally talked with him because he was asking what route he should go. And what he's asking for is something that's been discussed for several years down here, but there's never been any action to take the area over there, east of Thirteenth Street, north of About Willow, up to P. And, uh, it's all designated as R2, and the lot sizes and the requirements are too big to use. We've been talking about making changes so the infill lots can be used over there. And what his problem is, is in R2, right now, it's required to have a six thousand square foot lot, and the biggest he can get is about forty-nine hundred square feet, which would still be able to put a fairly good-sized house on. And it would be able to line up and fit with the properties that are already down there. And like I said, it's been discussed several times throughout the years, but nothing's ever been
Would you give us a recommendation?
I
From the board? We should ask
The, the board, I, I could tell you uh, with pretty much certainty, we're behind it. But nothing's just ever been gone through. But it wouldn't be, we would definitely say that area, and then look at other areas if it comes up, but right now, that's the area that's got the small lots that can't be built on.
I mean, I think our, I think our setbacks need to be looked at, I mean, you go to like Denver, some of these big cities now where they're just out of room, like, they're building multimillion-dollar homes ten feet away from another home, they're I mean, maybe our, I mean, like the row houses, these, these new kids don't want a yard, they want a five-foot setback, and I mean, I think we need to, I would rather see rather than squeezing the house to the lot, I'd rather adjust our I mean, I don't want things on top of each other, but I, I almost would rather see us build nicer houses and, and
And see, we all
Squeeze our
We already have it in there, if, uh, the other houses are in one position that you can line up with them. But still, it still requires six thousand square foot lots.
If some of those are so small over there
Where are these lots at?
Basically, east of thirteen
East of Thirteenth, north, uh, anywhere mixed through, north of Willow, up to P.
So
Uh, the ones he's looking at are on, uh, he was asking us about, I think it's fifteenth and Q, or no, fifteenth and O, I think, or Silver Lane somewhere. Well, we okayed the ones for Silver Lane, he could do that, but I think he's got one on Cashland. Is the one
And I think we should ask our planning board to look at some other, other cities and see what they're doing to maximize their, um, I mean, to, to encourage more.
You won't want to do all that, but, uh, you'll want to scale that down a little bit, but they are talking about things like that in that zoning code rewrite we're mentioning, that we've, that we've been working on for this year. We haven't landed on what those will all be, but that theme has come up, and I, I think the rule that Jackie is talking about is the legislature passed a law requiring us to allow accessory dwelling units on every residential lot, which means essentially everybody could build a guest house that they can rent out and
Well, actually, there's two different laws.
There, there's a variance one too that changes the standards for, yeah, and that helps you guys out because you guys, almost every city in Iowa has been following the variance standard that they just passed forever. It's kind of more of a, if you want it in your neighborhood and you think it's okay, versus the four-prong hardship test that nobody followed, that some court cases really brought forward the, um, limitations of that exist, the way that it had been done.
So what's our best up? Send it to the planning board, that recommendation, or?
I think if you, um, want to have that particular applicant's individual circumstances be considered on how we could craft our general rules, we definitely can do that. And our, and we could address it in the zoning code that we're working on.
But as far as him right now, if if our code is that, his only option is a, a board of adjustments.
He could, he could go to the board of adjustment, um, I don't know, is he looking to have a project done this year?
No.
No, it's, it's something for the future. Uh, what he's doing now, he's going to build a, a townhome over on the property that he has now. But on this other property, he'd really like to bu, build individual units instead of a townhome.
I think his best course of action would be to submit what he wants to the board, so when we're crafting our rules, if we might be able to make a general rule that could apply to more than just him.
I mean, yeah, no, I think we want to do something for that whole area to make it more usable.
Yeah, that's what the, the planning board, when we discussed it several different times, we'd like to see the whole area, so we don't have this
So you're just going to try and keep it in that area instead of all throughout the whole town?
Yeah, just in that area, just similar to what, uh, you know, the club has a special
Yeah.
Uh, thing for it, for different setbacks and stuff, and we'd like to probably do something similar to that.
So you kind of have a boundary around the area that you're thinking about?
Roughly like I was talking about, Thirteenth East, Willow North to probably Avenue P, so That's pretty much that area.
My editorial comment on zoning is, is that if you look at the history of zoning, it was established in the Supreme Court cases of the United States only apply to it as a way to separate nuisances from each other. It's not to like try to make sure you have these kinds of houses or aesthetic things or stuff like that, it's it's meant to basically eliminate the incidences of nuisances getting located next to each other, and I support you I support you being as free as you want to be with letting people do what they need to do on their property to get return on their investment and live the lives they want. It's.
While you're both here, how's the plan update coming?
Um, I think we have made a lot of the big decisions. There's some work that needs to be done on the commercial and industrial zones. But once those are made, then we need to review the, some of the smaller-scale rules that aren't as prominent, make sure that the code is what they want, then incorporate these items that Jackie's talking about. And I think we'll, we'll be redrafting the, we'll be updating and redrafting the current code. We're not going to have a, a brand-new code. So, and then I think Liz is working on a map for them, so that was the last thing they wanted to finalize those, so the, I, I think they're in good shape.
We've got another workshop scheduled for the twenty-eighth at six-thirty if anyone's interested.
The twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth at six-thirty. Anyone's welcome to come.
Alright. Thanks, Ray. Alright, citizens can.
If you could, that'd be awesome.
Uh, any citizen concerned? Any comments?
Hi, if you guys were here a couple minutes ago, when I was here and I was hoping Ron and Jackie would be here, but they're not here tonight. And Aaron, I'm want to come back on some of your statements because I've had kind of the same issues as you, with you as Jackie and Ron do not like me. Um, to start with, I've asked for three videos since, uh, August twenty-ninth and these are, these are my recordings.
Thank you.
And I, I've asked for them twice. I believe I gave the second copy to Lisa. I'm not sure. First one was from Lori.
Thank you, Tim.
Besides for that, I've asked for a grievance with the police department three-fourths of a year ago, haven't never heard back from that. I talked to Sean about it, it was pretty much blown off. Um, I've requested meetings and videos, grievances being denied. Why are, why are our videos and our grievances not being listened to? I was there for the last time, Ron, none of you said anything. You guys seen Ron tell me and my effin' friend, Bill Dahl, and walked out the door. Nobody said anything. Not a one of you, Ron, council members, mayors, attorney, the city person, administrator, nobody said anything. The only reason I'm running you guys is because you guys don't say stuff to protect us. As Aaron just said, um, freedom of speak. Aaron, they won't let me talk. You were talking about getting on the agenda? I tried to get on agenda for a year and a half. They wouldn't let me speak because I was saying the thing, oh, same thing over and over again, Jason. Before I came and talked to you, Jackie went out on a you, everybody here was involved in a, uh, not a council, the workshop meeting. Every one of you talked about me, about what I had to say. Nobody, nobody told me about it. She did nothing but lied. I talked to you about it, and I'm not saying you blew me off, but I said, Jason, you said, you've already discussed it. No, I, that's, issue's over with. I'm discussing because she's lying. I'm trying to get to a point. I lose my attitude because you guys aren't listening. And as you said, the agendas. Why, why aren't we hitting agendas? Why, why are, I've been in your office many times, giving you, Lori, I don't talk to Jackie, an agenda. I've gave you guys these worksheets, nothing, and I don't really want any comments, I mean, any comment back because you just take my time. Freedom of speech. I just got done talking to Matt, uh, Wilbur today because I'm not happy with any of you guys. The mayor, the mayor, the council, come on, I, I left Lisa a message over a month ago, and I know you're busy and I know you probably forgot to give it to you, but you know, to me, that's an excuse. They do not want to talk to me. They do not want me up here talking because why? I voice my opinion. Why don't you guys voice your opinion when the public comes up and says stuff? Nobody says anything. Um, I was asked by the police department to ask about, you guys all know what took place. I was asked by the police department to ask questions to the audience. Mayor said, no, you can't say nothing. Not you, the previous attorney said, no, you can't say anything. The city council meetings, these recorders, the police chief, I'm sorry, Sergeant Ganzar, and many residents and many of you have asked for these cameras to stay on until the room is empty. Correct? Have any of you heard that? I guess nobody's answering. Everybody's heard that.
You told us not to talk because it takes your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, these cameras would have protected me three times from issues that's happened up here. And when I go back and say, I asked for the video and they're edited, do you guys know it's illegal to edit a video on these? That's what, not saying that's what the attorney told me over in Council Bluffs, but you are not allowed to edit. Me and, me and my friend, me, I've been edited on almost every video I've had with you guys. Go back and look at them.
Do you have?
I don't want any comments, please. Thank you. Um, transparency with cameras. You guys all voted on these cameras. I asked to have a camera in the lobbies, just so when the public walks in, we, we can be, you know, you can hear our complaints in the public. Um, I talked to all of you back last February and I got the impression everybody said, yeah, let's have audio. And, and then when it was all done, everybody made comments, but I wasn't here. Um, there, there's no, I asked for a video of what took place in the office about a month ago and it shows me walking around. Would you guys print those videos? Budget, thousands? It doesn't show nothing. Has anybody in your office ever been assaulted? I, I, has any of the three girls that you worked with ever been assaulted in that office?
That's a roll of a ten, that's.
So, so what's the purpose of having a camera in that office without audio? It's a waste of our money. You were the one that said, hey, I made out the check yesterday. I talked to Lori as she walked out the door that night with the issue back here, and Lori said, no, the cameras aren't installed yet. I said, I was told by Jason two weeks ago, he just wrote out a check. You guys got to make a deposit for something? Workshop? Well, that's at the workshop. You guys, I, I still can't believe you guys would discuss anybody, a citizen, at a workshop that is not recorded and don't tell them. I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't, I'm asking you guys, put the workshop on video, put that on channel two-twenty-two. You're going to talk behind our back, let us know about it. It's really bad when they talk about behind your back and we don't know it.
Two-minute warning.
Okay, thank you. Why didn't anybody, you guys are all my friends. Every, every one of you are my friends. I know you personally. Why didn't somebody come up and say, I had to have a friend come up and say, city offered you ten thousand dollars. Whoa! Yeah, and as you're saying that, that was because of a medical issue that had nothing to be said to anybody. When does medical be talked between city council members? I asked for a doctor to be removed. The DNR asked me, I asked the DNR to have removed. Nothing to do with medical, guys. Nothing to do with medical. And it's, I got the letter from the workshop, I got the DVD, I had to ask for it and I got the paperwork that Jackie wrote up and gave all you guys a stack this big. I was in an ambulance. I fell at the lake. I wanted you guys to pay my bills. I'd never re- I never sent one bill into Carter Lake. Well, medical asked me to give, to give, to ask where the incident took place. That's all I said. And what I've done, that's it. Matt Wilbur just pretty much taught me how to file complaints from here on out.
Thank you.
And I thank you guys. But I would ask, like I asked because everybody's watching on TV, why aren't any of you standing up and saying something?
Clint, what is the, what is the, I, when they put in a public records request, so these have to be acknowledged.
Ten days of truth, Tony.
They, yeah, that is correct. They're supposed to give him an answer, and that's honestly just for, uh, here's the actual standard here. The ten days is just for confidential documents that need to review. That need, that can be reviewed for confidential information, which is a limited number of public documents. But if the, if the city hall has access to records and they can produce them in what would take less than half an hour worth of work, they're not, they're supposed to give it with no cost and, and, and handle, and process these, um, duly and quickly.
Yeah, and can I, can I finish? I want the DVDs with the, with, without, when, when they say meetings are adjourned, cameras are supposed to stay on until everybody gets it. I want those DVDs. I don't want the one thing. When you look at the DVD on, 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 uh, on channel twenty-two, any of them, I just stand up here in the film's cut, it goes right to the, uh, national anthem. My friend seen it, he's not on the DVD.
So you're looking for the raw?
I want the raw video.
Yeah.
But not you. They will not give it to me. They're going to have every excuse. They will not give it to me. And my first amendment, right, that has been totally violated four times from these, four times. You were here on three of them.
Yeah, chapter twenty-two of the Iowa code requires us to give him those documents.
Deal with it, you know, with the mayor calling me, if I don't like it, go get an attorney. If I don't like what's going on, guys, go get an attorney.
I don't stand behind the mayor, so if you want my honest opinion, I don't stand behind him. If I don't know what he's saying.
Attorney, just to get the clerk's office to look at my land assessment.
They won't even listen to me. You guys, since I've been here the past year, I've walked in that office, I have been called up in Congress four times. I've lived in Carter Lake for seventy years and I have never, ever had a violation with any of the policemen, no issue whatsoever. Now I have a grievance called because of, because of Lori and Jackie, not because of you, but I have a grievance on my record. In order to be taken off, I got to take it to court. I got to fight it. What's my chances? You guys, you guys all live in great houses. You all know where I live at. I'm the, thanks. That's all I really want to say. I'm, I'm just tired. I'm, you know, hopefully you two are here to hit the man. I wish you two luck, you know. I came in fourth place of.
You're going to be appointed.
Yeah, good place, boy. Yeah, I came in fourth.
I'm appointing you.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other comments?
Can we get this put on like a, like the complaint form on the website? So it's not?
It's, it's on there, but it needs to be put in there like a concern.
Can I make one comment about complaints?
Haven't you?
I don't know you, I don't know you. Okay, I, I don't know you at all, but when I put complaints in before, nobody cares.
Camera will take care of it.
I hope, yeah.
He will. Bob?
Keep it short, will you?
I don't talk too long, anyway. Uh, my thing is with Aaron, uh, I kind of agree with the lot you say. Whether Ron likes you or Jackie Carl likes you, they should still put you on the agenda. If you can do what you say, they need to look in our, uh, town for things. Cameron, you probably don't realize this, but in this, my opinion only, we probably have some of the best plumbers here in the Midwest, all in Carter Lake. We have a lot of good electricians. Almost every type of field we have, we have some top-notch people here. If somebody is willing like Aaron to come in and help and look it over uh, for minimal wage or free, we should look at it just whether people like him or not. That's between them, I don't know. But I run a business and whether, if I don't like somebody but they can make me money, I'm all for it. Second thing is, and this is a really dumb question, but I'm just asking. Uh, this is for Aaron here. Shutting off the water all the time and all that, does it really hurt the pipes? And the only reason why I ask that, about once a month I get something from the water company, oh, you should invest in insurance on your pipes.
I mean, the proper way of turning the water off and on can affect the pipe, but in all reality, our valves should be actuated regularly.
Okay.
And they should be using them. I, I believe today they were doing investigative to try to, they're still working to try to figure out what area they're shutting down and to record it on our GIS system, so it's kind of just a process.
The only reason why I ask that, when you first turn the water on after they've been shut off for a while, it's fun.
Get all the air.
Well, you notice they even, something they did, you know, they, they had the water opened and they were running water while they do it. That's the biggest thing, is to make sure you're not building a water hammer or causing pressure.
Alright. But good luck in getting some work.
Fire trucks will ruin your pipes, though.
They can.
They will suck them flat.
Boy, your water heater up.
Um, I'm sorry I wasn't here earlier when you guys talked about the Parks Rec Board. Um, I just want to say I applied a year and a half ago, and when I went in there to fill it out, in the middle of writing it, Jackie Carl pulled it out from under me and threw it away. And then eventually Lori gave me another one and I filled it out. I felt like it was just going to be thrown away, so I called Jackie Wall to make sure it was out there. I was told that I couldn't even be on there because I had a protection order against Shane, which I'm being penalized for his bad behavior. So this time, I wasn't comfortable going to Jackie Carl again and having it thrown away. So this time, I went to Tyler. Tyler told me that he put me on the list, but he said it's picked by the mayor. He said that the mayor had not picked one this year and it would be on the list for the next year, so I assumed Jason would be picking it. I assume I'm taken off again because I wasn't on the list. I can tell you, I took eight days of vacation this summer to run the concession stand. We gave Tyler a check for almost five thousand dollars to buy new, new equipment. I helped with the cleaning down here. I run Coach by Christ at my church. I run youth group, which we just got finally at the community center. And I also help with the winter festival. And just to have your name thrown away, I think is ridiculous. It's crazy that you have people who want to volunteer and you guys don't even want to look at it. And I don't, I'm not blaming you guys. I don't know where it fell through this time, and I didn't go to Jackie Carl because I felt so uncomfortable last time. So I'm hoping the next time that you guys have it open, that my name can at least get on the list. Thank you.
Thanks.
Maybe work a, a, Cameron, a, a process of.
Yeah, we're going to remove all applications.
And get a system of, you know, if we have a pile of them, we work from who's next in line or something, you know, not a favoritism thing and not who we like.
They're just going to be.
Who do you want to volunteer for?
I already do. I volunteer at the school and I asked the lady at the front desk, is there anything that the teachers need, that anybody needs at the school, that I can help you collect? And I expected Kleenex, magic markers, crayons, pencils, stuff like that. She gave me a list that was for ki- for first grade, preschool to first grade. They need shoes, socks, underwear, unders, undershirts, outside shirts, little pants for the kids that have accidents and stuff like that, or they spill their food on them and they end up going to the nurse. So the easiest way to get this through Carter Lake is to put it in the newspaper. Can I put it in the newspaper? I have a list at home.
Yeah, just bring it in.
And then to put it on channel twenty-two. And have all the people that have kids in that age group, when your kids outgrow the clothes, if they're still decent, we, um, just volunteer and give them to the school and they'll be glad to take them and they'll keep them in the nurse's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, last Tuesday morning, about five in the morning, I had a, my wife had a medical emergency and we had to call the ambulance, and I would just like to commend the crew that was there and the police officer was there. They were very helpful, very professional and knew exactly what they were doing and I was really impressed.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is your wife alright?
Yeah, she's back off tonight.
Good. You're looking a little thin. You must be cooking yourself.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just wanted to bring up a concern I've had. Uh, I missed the last couple meetings, uh, because I'm forgetting about what day it was. Uh, but there's a few times, uh, throughout the year, uh, almost hit a kid on one of those, uh, electric motorized bikes or scooters. They're ignoring street signs and blowing through. Um, I've seen, uh, reports of other small towns that have put some type of, uh, restrictions on them, uh, license, insurance and so forth for, uh, certain e-bikes and scooters that have certain ratings, and that's just something I'd like to see down here as well. So I don't want to hit a ten-year-old kid on a bike.
Thanks.
Jackie can tell you, the Voice Club has been working with the police department on it and they even gave them comments and went over the rules within the last month because Jackie Wall's down there.
I've hit one and he gave me a fair.
Alright. Any other comments? Clint, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Jacob?
Yes.
Nope, nothing.
Aaron?
No.
I just wanted, uh, real quick, the election's November fourth from seven AM till eight PM and wish all the candidates good luck, all you guys. And then also there, there will be a candidate's night held here on October twenty-ninth at six PM. The audience will be able to submit questions when they come in and then, um, each candidate gets to pick a question, I believe. Each candidate will get to pick a, a question that, um, have a representative that, the candidates won't, I'm not doing that. They will have a representative to, to pick a question each. Um, I believe that's it. Jackie?
When would you like those names? Keaby?
You can just have him, give him to a set of nine, just make sure that.
Oh, okay.
Go back to the back, go back to your column.
And then I wanted to ask, I know, last week Tyler said he still needed some people to set up for Trick or Trunk. Is that correct?
Trunk or treat?
So.
Do we have double the amount? Do we have double the amount of candy that we had last year? Do we have double the amount of candy that we got last year?
I think twenty-five hundred dollars is quite a bit of candy.
It seemed like it ran out really quick last year.
Well, I think he's.
It's the easiest.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, which, you know, most trunk or treats do that, people bring a, a lot of their own stuff.
It's the easiest community service you could do, like, it's a good time, I've done it every year, can't be there this year, but, um. I would highly, highly recommend if you don't, if you've not done it before, it's, it's worth your night, I mean, it's two hours, it's.
Movie or something?
What is the time that they're supposed to set up?
Uh, I believe about a half hour early is what he wants.
Is it from six to eight?
About five-thirty, yeah, it goes from six to eight.
Okay. So set up at five-thirty?
Be there by five-thirty, you're right.
Okay.
And once you get there, then I'll let you in.
Yeah.
Until eight o'clock, because we had people last year leaving and they're still kids walking through.
Okay, thank you.
Boys Club date for the, uh.
I think there's this Halloween night, isn't it?
Boys Club's really looking for people, this is their first year doing it, they have a new person in charge that's gonna start it.
That's gonna be Halloween night? Halloween night. From when to when?
Um, I believe it's from five to seven, I can help you out and let you know.
Anything else, Jackie?
No, that's it.
Vic?
This time next month, there'll be a new council.
Cameron?
See you at Trunker Treat.
Lisa? All right, thanks everybody for coming.
Cameron, you survived another night with us.
So, we had a community. And it was the school district. Yes, ma'am. Boys and Girls Club, our library, the school, and it's sending around exactly where they're from.
It's thirty minutes, Russ, didn't you read that?
That's that revolution on the hazard.
There you go.
Let's see, we sign it, oh, where the yellow is, obviously. Okay. And then here I write, cancel. Lisa, do I write cancel on this line? It says cancel, what is it, oh, oh, that's all I.
One thing, that's being asshole. I think, started to learn that. That's all you can do. No, he's right. He's damn the ground. That's what I heard, yeah, he's excited about it.
I was saying ones there on the corner of, uh, fifteenth and Cashman, not that.
Oh, yeah, no, it'll take a while.
Yep, and it'd be those, or. Those you're talking about. Right. Does Vince still live there? Does Vince still live there? Vincent Penny?
Yeah, 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 it's a good thing.
Oh, did I?
I'll email and a- uh, ask him when we should meet and talk about.
You got to wait for the beep. Brother John? He's a pretty good brother. I got something cold in my refrigerator.
We need to make some notes on that, you gotta quit the buyer stuff, Cameron's gonna handle that, it's on top of it.